Yeah, so we're excited to have you all here today. Welcome back if you're brand new. We're super excited to have you as well because you're going to actually see behind the curtain today is some real member websites on the Get Oiling platform and we have some crazy exciting news to announce around custom websites. And you guys are going to be over the moon about this. My jaw hit the floor when I saw what was coming out today. So we're going to open up with that. We're not doing training slides today. If you got the memo this morning, we tripled the website reviews for today. So just to make sure you're here, just so I can get a headcount. Do we have Tammy Taylor Echo, Dana Jennifer, Donald Judith LeBeau and Tammy Gross here? Show me your hands so we can make sure that we get to you on this call. All right. Excited, excited to see you guys. If, you know, in the event that someone's not able to make it, we'll do what we can to accommodate and bring some more folks in. So today, we're talking about updates, custom pages, updates primarily and Get Oiling. And so with that, I want to kick it over to Greg and let him show you the magic he's been working on behind the scenes.
Hello, everybody. Let me get my screen shared out here. All right, we've got some exciting stuff for you. I'll start with the, some of the, oh, I'll start with it. It's all fun. I'll just say it's all fun. So, yeah, so first of all, there's a couple little tweaks and enhancements that might be useful for you. This is a demo account here. If we've had a lot of requests to like, hey, can we pop up the lead box right away on a custom page? You can do that now. So let me pull up one just test page that I have here. If you're linking to a page, just add hashtag lead on the end of it. And then when they visit it, it will automatically pop up the lead box. So you can go from like some other page to this one and automatically pop it up. This is super useful, especially if you're doing payments and you've got some other sales page in front of it. You just want to put them on a page where it pops up the payments right away. That can, that can do that for you. Also, another change, if you don't like the, you know, some of your URLs have slash page in it. That's actually optional now. If you just delete it, let me get rid of that slash lead on there. It actually still will work. So that's another new change. So you can make it basically be, and this is the test site, so it's still on getoiling.com. But if you have a custom domain, this would be your domain name slash and then whatever your page link address is. So let me go in here and edit it so I can show you that when you're doing your settings, that's whatever your link path is. So basically your domain name slash whatever your link path is. Now you have a nice short link. Related to that one, while we're, while we're still doing this, there's a new advanced setting. And this is for any, I think it's basic and higher. There's now this auto forward option. So you can essentially create nice short links on your domain name now. So if you have your domain name slash my lead magnet name, whatever, you want to put something out there for people to go to. And it's on a bigger, longer URL or maybe it points into some download or whatever. You can do that. You can type in anything that you want to, any address that you want to. Or an auto forward page and it will do that. So I'll just use Google here as an example. I'll think that's the very same page. And then I'll refresh it now that I put that forward on there and boom, sends me right over to Google. So the combination of that short link plus this forwarding really can, you know, you can make all those pretty little short links. Like you've seen us do, like, you know, we have getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. Now you can do that on your own website that can point to some other page if you want to. Forward people on, send them to remember, whatever you want to do, the sky's the limit in terms of that. So.
Or for blog posts. That's huge.
Blog posts too, all sorts of landing pages. I mean, all sorts of possibilities there. So, yeah, that's, that's the initial exciting stuff. And I think, whoops, wrong button here. The other exciting stuff we've got here are we've added quite a few page templates now. So we've heard, we've had a request from people like, hey, we'd love more page templates. We want something a little more variety and design and, you know, updated style, whatever. So now when you're creating a page in the page builder, and for those of you who aren't familiar with how to get there, if you go under my site settings and then click on custom pages, that'll take you to the custom page builder. And then whenever you create now, you'll see a whole variety of new templates here. Now, some of the, you know, the existing ones are still here sprinkled in between. You can probably see those. But we've added a number of these and I'll show you them. I've actually got them on the tabs here as well. So there's a couple of about me pages. There's kind of a nice homepage design. We even have a lead magnet confirmation page, which is like one of the biggest requests we've had. Like what do I send people to after they've registered? Well, we have a nice little template for you. Put your name here, logo, and I'll show you that a little bit. And even a little video, that's a nice little hook to keep people watching while instead of fishing for their email. We've got a mission page, a products page, if you happen to be, you know, listing some products that you have for sale. Projects, you know, if you're doing, if you have projects and that's part of what you do. And there's also like a what I do, which is a different twist on an about me page. So I'll show you some of these here and these are accessible to you when you're creating, you know, the page template. You could just click on them and it'll pull up, pull it up. And it's really just kind of meant to be replaced. Change your own photo. Click on the photo here. Put the replace button, put in your own. So it should just be like, you know, highlight and replace with the text that you want in there to make it your own. And then save, you can change some of those things, but I'll show you the page template. So this is the homepage template. It's taking advantage of some of that fun little parallax stuff I showed. I think it was last weekend or last week, weekend, last week. And yeah, so there's just, you can go browse these and you can see the page templates that are out there now. This is the products page template again with the parallax, but it's got some basic page layouts for you where you can easily swap in your own images and text and make it your own so much easier than having to come up with some of these designs on your own. Now that we know a bit more about what everyone is looking for, these page templates will hopefully help out. So this is one of the about me templates. And, you know, a lot of these buttons are actually hooked up. So you can click them and they will pop up the contact me box. And here's another about me page, kind of a different darker look. And a mission page here, we've got, you know, you can just take a look at all these, but all definitely. They're definitely out there for you to look at now. You can browse them all, check out what page template looks the best for you. And then here's the lead magnet template too, like after they've confirmed. A good practice is, you know, obviously put, put your name or whatever it is and what you're, what they've registered for. And then some instructions about like, hey, you know, add this, whatever your email address is to your address book. Use Gmail, move to your inbox. And then here's a nice, nice opportunity to put another video. Instead of sending them off to their email where they might get distracted by the latest sale and whatever's there. You've got their attention right now. So just show them this video and maybe even like a deeper call to action, whatever that might be. They were interested enough with the lead magnet. So maybe you can, you know, continue their interest and direct them further down your funnel. So those are the exciting additions we've got today. So, yeah, we're excited to hear what you've got to say about them and what the pages that you have or the pages that you can create from them too.
Guys, how many of you are just absolutely floored at the fact that if you have no idea how to structure a website and you want an idea of what to do and see work that's already done, just to plug in your own stuff? How many of you are so excited to have a framework in place for you to just swap out your own stuff and get the show on the road? How huge is that? Look at those hands.
That's a lot of hands. Wow.
Look at the hands. This is so exciting, Greg. Thank you for doing this. You guys, we've, you know, we definitely get from time to time more advanced questions about pretty links and things like that that you can do with your site, stuff that you would normally only be able to do with a domain manager or if you are using a more complicated system, different plugins and things like that. What Greg just showed you is an absolute bomb move to brand yourself and the stuff that you do. So let's just say for instance, you wanted to create a page that, you know, that maybe directed people to some different online classes that she'll be offering soon. You can now set up on your Get Oiling site, yourname.com/classes. How much easier is it for you to just put that into a social post, right? Or into an email or just to share it verbally? So, so frickin' cool, you guys. This is so, so awesome. So that's, um, this is all, you know, apropos of what we're going to be doing today. So we're going to be talking about some custom sites that our members have built. We're going to look at them together. We're going to go over them together and talk about optimizing them. And now you know how to go and make yours even more optimal using some pre-made templates for certain purposes. There's more of those coming, by the way. And then of course, yeah, and then to be able to make sharing easier on your site. If you make a page and you don't want to like, you know, remember all 57 million characters in the link because you put a bunch of words in the description or something, you can just say myname.com/whatever. And now you can share. That's so, so stinking cool. So really excited. Juliette, thank you for being here. A copy of this video will be sent to all attendees and will be listed on YouTube later for reference. Yes, just like our other weekly work sessions. That is correct. All right. So let's, let's get on with doing a little show and tell. Going to start with the first, first registrant for today, Tammy Taylor. Where are you at, my dear? Going to bring you out and I would love for your, actually, hold on real quick. I'm lowering all hands. And then Tammy Taylor, if you could please raise your hand for me and make me, make it a little easier. All right. So I'm going to allow you to talk. Okay, Tammy, you there? You can unmute yourself.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
It's great to see you again. Tell us a little bit about what you would like feedback on, on this cute site that you've made here.
Okay, um, one thing I'm, I would like to see and I, um, just some little decoration around here. I had it on my Facebook page. I have it. But I need to like redo it to make it bigger on here. Just, I have a diffuser, a hummingbird, somebody praying and like a garden kind of surrounding this. I want to make this more, a little bit more pretty.
Okay. So one of the things that you can do actually, and let me, I'm going to, if we could, just a second here. I'm going to stop my share. I'm going to go into your account really quickly and show you one of the ways that you can do this.
Okay.
Excuse me. Where are you today? It looks like it's beautiful outside.
Kansas City, Missouri. It's a little chilly and I was going to run in and get a jacket, but I was afraid that I would miss my name being called.
Well, here we are. Well, we'll, we'll make sure that we get this done quickly. All right. So your homepage should be the one that's called home. Okay, perfect. All right. I'm going to share again and show you what I recommend that you do just to, if you want to clarify this more, okay? So you used, it looks like this is a template that probably came from Go For Gold, right? For your homepage?
Um, yes, I think so.
Excellent. All right. So one of the things that you can do is, and Greg showed this last week, is you can actually use an image for your section background, right? So just to show you, and this obviously, don't, don't keep it like I'm about to show you because it's going to be a little too busy, right? Because you, so you can't see the hummingbird here. But what you can do when you change this, and it's in the section setting right here, edit the section background. I'll change it back to none. You can also add a color. And so I'm just going to grab this one here. And you can actually add color to your background as well.
I was just working on that right before we came here on another page.
Awesome, awesome. Yeah. So, so you have the ability to do that if you, if you want. And that'll, that'll allow you to, if you wanted to kind of create more visual. And then another option that you have is just to use a different section where if you go to photos, for instance, if you want to have a few different images, although I do recommend that you have something like this a little further down the page. What you want to have up here at the top is, is this, right? You, you, you want this to be drawing their eye toward this right here. Because what you do when someone clicks this and they enter their information here is you get a lead. That's the most valuable function that your website has is to get you leads. And even if the people that are seeing this website are people who, you know, maybe have already committed to saying yes to, you know, checking Young Living out or something like that. If they aren't on your email list, if they haven't opted in, then that's more legwork that you have to do. So you just want to make sure that no matter what you do visually up here, that everything right up in this top part of the page, it's all about getting them to take action on this thing that's right here. And this is really lovely. I really like what you've done. You know, this sort of pretty woodland birdie theme that you've got going on here with the purple and the blue and the hummingbirds. Gorgeous. I think that even though you're using sort of a scripty custom font, it's very legible. It's easy to read and that's important. You've got a call to action to read your blog. Excellent. And the link works. You've got a free Facebook group and I've, I use Rescue Time and it doesn't want me to get on Facebook because I don't want me to get on Facebook, what I'm focusing, but excellent. Good job. Let's see, this is great about you. And then you've got your contact form. Excellent. And then you've got your contact form there as well. Tammy, this is really good. This is really, really, really good. So what specifically are you looking for feedback on beyond anything that I've shared with you just now?
Right before I was, we got on, I was working on trying to connect a course to that. And I, I don't know if I got it checked. I think it's under resources.
Okay. Let me see, under resources. So you've got your blogs and your favorite things?
No, it's under services.
Oh, there we go. So book now.
Okay, that, that is a template. I need to get rid of that, but create your garden oasis. I didn't have a chance to test it.
Uh huh. All right. So it looks like this might be an image or some other kind of file that's not popping up there. So is that, is create your garden oasis a, a class inside of a group or?
Yeah, it's member area.
Okay.
Vaults and it's the last one.
Okay. So journey to transformation? Is this the one?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. And do you have this set up to where people can let themselves in or they're paying for it? All right, perfect. So you've got your payment plan set up. So basically what you want to do from here is on journey to transformation, there's a couple of options. View vault is the link that you're going to want to use. It's not, oh yeah, here you go. It's letting me in. So there's a vault. Now I'm logged in as you, so this is not what it would look like for your lead. So basically what you want to make sure that you do is you, in your custom menu, which is going to be under my site settings, you just want to take that vault link and then put it in the, in the menu. If you want people to be able to go and purchase that, or you can put that link on the page if I could get back to that. So my site settings, when you go to custom pages, that was your services page, right?
Yes. And then I, yeah, put it right.
There we go. Updates, save. So now, and let me open this in a new window and then log out of being you. And then let's check it out. All right. So now this is where that goes. What I would encourage you to do is, is to add more information right here. So that you think of this as kind of like a sales page, anything that you would be sharing to help them make the decision to purchase, you would just put right here, a video from you is an excellent thing to put right here. And I can show you really quick where to find that. Let me pop out of this again. And I'll show you where you can actually go and get that done. It's going to be in that vault, under the payment settings tab. I'll show you real quick just so you know where to go. And anybody who's watching, who's wondering, oh, how do I do that? I'll show you how you can do it. All right. So I am back here signed into Tammy. And under your member area vaults, and of course, this is for a vault that you're, you're charging people to enter. So we're going to click on it so that we can open its settings.
I want to make it where like my members can get in free, but outsiders will have to pay.
Yeah. So what you'll want to do is just add a plan here that, that, that allows them to get it for free. And then that coupon code is one that you would want to make sure that only your members get access to.
The lowest one I can find is a dollar. You have to put something in there.
You can use negative values.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. So if you, if you use negative values and actually when you, when you hit add plan, I just learned this yesterday, last night I was setting this up. All right. So what you can do, this little thing will actually explain it when you hover over this I. So, um, okay. So you can, you can actually use a negative figure there.
Good to know.
Yeah. All right. So, um, so this is where if you wanted to kind of turn this into a sales page for people who would need to buy, this is the checkout page message. This is where you would want to add any of that information so that you can see more when you actually get over to, to the, the sales page for this, which I'm logged back in as you, so we can't see that. That make sense?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you so much for sharing.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Have a great day and say hello to your daughter.
I will. I will. She'll be excited I talked to you.
Take care. All right. Who is next? If I can find my page again. I know we have another Tammy who is here today. Tammy's the word of the day. If you could raise your hand, Tammy, while I get around to finding our, our event today. There you are. Hello. How's it going?
It is a little chilly here today.
Yeah, where are you? In Ohio. All right. I'm going to pull up your website, Tammy Algross. And we are going to take a look at what you got going on. Tell me a little bit about what you would like to get feedback on today.
You see, I've got a good start knowing. I've only had this for three to four weeks. So I am just moved. Tammy, that you just were me.
Okay, we're kind of losing your audio, Tammy. I'm not really able to hear you well. I did hear you say that you've had our site for three to four weeks and that you're maybe just kind of getting started with it?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. I feel like I've seen, is this, is this a Get Oiling theme? Do we have this like as, as one of our pages? I guess maybe team Greg?
Yeah, that is the landing page.
Okay, excellent.
Yep.
Excellent. All right. So, um, so this is, you guys, is a great example of when you're getting started with Get Oiling and good job doing this, Tammy. This is a great way for you to use what we already have made so that you can start getting leads right away and start using your site for all of its functions, even as you're still learning the ins and outs of how to use it. So, um, so what you'll want to do, and I don't know, Greg, we have, is there a camp? There's a campaign that's attached to this that actually expands like for this funnel, right?
It's that built-in new prospects campaign. It isn't specifically about pets, but there is one that's written and does send out when someone registers.
Okay, got you, got you. So one of the things that you can do, Tammy, is if you go to getoiling.com/getleads, show you what it looks like. And this is free for anybody who's watching this right now, if you want to learn how to do this. All right. Getoiling.com/getleads will actually show you how to make your own lead magnet and funnel. Now, a lead magnet is basically what you're offering to someone in exchange for their information. So that instead of just posting on Facebook and hoping they saw it, you could actually send a message straight to them, to anyone who has expressed interest in what you have to say, so that you can be more effective in the time you spend in your business. So if you love this and you love pets and, and this is kind of the, the direction that you'd like to go in terms of how you are communicating, what you have to share with people, then maybe you can make a, you know, make a list of like the five steps you follow to get this one really important benefit for one of your animals, right? Or, or just something that can help someone get a quick win so that you can establish trust with them so that they can be grateful for what you've shared and then they are open to hearing about your recommendations for products. So, yeah, does that make sense?
Yes.
Awesome. All right. So we've got your story here, which is great. And one thing that I will recommend, just as you continue to, to grow and understand the different ways that you can use this site, what you're doing right now is probably using our site, this site here that you've got set up to, to talk to people about Young Living, right? So this, you're using this maybe as like a direct tool, you know, to, to share Young Living with someone?
Yes.
Excellent. Now, are you, just so I'm clear, are you following any specific trainings that go with Get Oiling? Like, you know, like Go For Gold or any of the website based trainings?
Yes, I don't remember which one, but it's one that was recommended to.
Okay.
The classes, yes.
Okay, excellent, excellent. So, um, so what, what you'll, you'll start learning more about as you get through some of those courses are some of the different ways that you can use our site. And the, the best way for you to start using the site as you have it set up right now is you go about and, and you are making friends and you're getting to know people. You're talking to somebody in the checkout line, what have you. And you strike up a conversation and they're interested in talking more about what you have to say. Then what you do is you can give them your website link now and they can opt in and then go check out the next page and get curious. Or if you want to do one better, what I recommend is that you set an appointment with them so that you're sitting down together, maybe on Zoom or over the phone while they're reviewing the information. Because I think, if you didn't know, please know now, and this goes for everybody listening. If you just send somebody a link, the likelihood that they'll do something with it or do what they said they'll do with it, or at least inside of the period of time that they said that they would, is pretty slim. So our best bet in terms of using our time effectively is going to be to use appointments as often as possible. So I would, you know, I'd set a time to, you know, hey, I got a website that'll show you everything. And, you know, they can put their name and email in here, or if you want to just go ahead and skip past that, if you're on the phone with them, then you can do that. And then you get to use this. Now, what you'll want to do as well, because we have a bunch of themes, not just pets, right? Is look for the training in our, our weekly work sessions on YouTube. That's youtube.com/getoiling. And also you can look in the, when you're logged into Get Oiling, there's a little teal question mark down in the bottom right. You can look up, what is the, what's the word I'm looking for here? Leg builder links. If you look up leg builder links, you can create shortcuts. So, you know, and now that Greg has shared what he did today, you could even create a, you know, And you could have all of that really easy to, to share and send and use as a tool to get people familiar with Young Living in a way that, you know, that's easy for them to understand. That make sense? Are you still there? Or did I lose you? Uh oh. All right. Well, thank you for coming on. I don't know if maybe you lost a connection or what have you. If you want to come back on and ask questions, then feel free, Tammy, to let me know that you're back. All right. Echo Alexander, are you here? If I could get back to my participants. Echo, there you are. Hi. Thanks for coming on today. How's it going? Oh, it said allow to talk. Let's try that again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Hi, how's it going?
Good, thanks.
Great. Well, I'm excited to share your site with everybody and chat with you about what you're wanting to get feedback on.
Yeah. So I recently redesigned. I'm going with Martha's program through the revolutionary stuff. So a lot less oils focused, more my brand and bat signal, which if you can't guess it, it's adventure. So this is my redesign for that. So I think really now I'm ready to start putting in some more integration. As Greg said, how do I get people further down the funnel? I've got a lot of offerings and I'm ready to start doing some courses. I've got my first paid link, not a vault, but just a custom page for a resource that I'm selling. So that's sort of the next phase. So ready to get feedback on how to do that and.
Okay. Echo, this is fantastic. I have to ask you, did you grow up on Lisa Frank?
I'm familiar with her, yeah.
I love, I love this so much. This is speaking to, speaking to my soul. All right. So, so tell me then specifically, because you've done an incredible job here. This oozes your personality. It is, it's sparkly. It gets to the point. Like this is, it's, it's fantastic. And you are also providing, you know, kind of a pretty clear. And you are also providing, you know, kind of a pretty clear, like, you know, hey, this is me, this is what this is about. The one thing that I would recommend, as I do often, is to have something. And it could be that you, maybe you want a pop-up to show up right away or something. You want, in the first couple seconds someone lands on a page, for them to take you up on a thing that gets them onto your list. You want to have your lead magnet upfront and obvious. And it's ideal that it's actually on the page itself and not just a pop-up. So, you know, so, so maybe, and I, let me see if it comes back up if I try to leave the screen or if I scroll. Okay, so I would also recommend that you use your pop-up to have it show up as well if someone tries to leave the screen. Because if it only goes up once and it's nowhere on the page, they can't find it anymore, right? Okay, so I, I love the personality that's in here. Okay, so again, with, with like the downloads and stuff, this is good to have, it's good to have this section right here. But what we want to make sure that we do again is that you've got like a really clear sort of value proposition for your ideal person that you have right up top. So, tell me about, tell me about the person that you are, that you're wanting to attract and what it is that you're offering them. Because it sounds like obviously you've got something that you're offering that is, you know, maybe above and beyond Young Living, or it's, you know, a thing that gets oiled or something like that.
Yeah, so my target clients are people that are working professionals, adding adventure on the weekends, evenings and those sorts of things. So, my sort of pillars are, you know, health, wellness, travel, those sorts of things, being entrepreneurs, making shifts from professional careers to entrepreneurship. So, yeah.
Okay, excellent. Alright, and then what are you offering them?
So, I don't have a targeted thing yet. I'm still, obviously that pop-up was just the basic, like ditching fragrance, those sorts of things. So, like I said, that's the shift now that I want to make. I've started blogging and been a lot more consistent on that and built a lot of content, built Facebook groups and those sorts of things. So, the next thing I want to focus on is whether it's free or paid content, but much more targeted to my bat signal person. This one's fine, obviously. It's, you know, getting fragrance out of your home, but that's a little bit more generic. It's not specific to my target person, so.
Okay, yeah, so, alright, so here's what I would recommend then. Think about what that core offering is. It doesn't have to be, you know, a thing that is actually separate from Young Living. In fact, if you, I know you're in Go For Gold, where Martha talks about the specialty group where, you know, you're more or less fashioning a value proposition that gets oiled, or oils are how you get in the door, or whatever. If you can kind of figure out what that is, right? If you can identify the steps on that journey. And then what you want to do is just take a piece out of that journey and you make that your lead magnet. Make it a thing that gives someone a win and you're offering that right up here up top, right? So, it's not just like, you're not just giving them something that you think that they would like. You're actually giving them something that is a piece of the solution. And that's gonna, what? It's gonna make them want to get more of the solution and to come further down the funnel, right? So, if you could imagine, I've been talking about this a lot recently and I've made, like when I have private calls with people who are leads for coaching, for working with me directly, I often show this graphic that I created for my clients to kind of illustrate the difference between the stuff that we tend to see on the outside when people are marketing their business and the stuff that it actually sits on top of. And the analogy that I use most frequently right now is those, you remember those, those like baseball-sized jawbreakers that we used to have as kids?
Yeah.
Right? So, so you see them and, and you know, you're seven and you're like, I want that, right? And you see the outside. And the outside is, you know, it's speckled and it's pretty and it's all this kind of stuff. Well, if you were to chop that in half, you would see all these layers on the inside, right? And if those layers weren't there on the inside, when you pick up that, that, you know, speckly, pretty thing, it will crush in your hands, right? The things that are on that outside layer are things like your website, like your blog, your social media, your lead groups, your website, generally speaking, all of the things that you tend to see other people doing. All of the success of that stuff on the outside is predicated on what's in the core. So, if in the core you are saying, alright, I helped this person get this result, here are the steps that I follow, that's your thing in the core. Take a piece out of the core, put that in your funnel. And then you take little topics that come out of that thing in the core and you put them in your blog and you put them in your social and that becomes your content, right? All roads lead to the center. Funnels are actually like little rabbit holes into the middle. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, I would actually, I would actually hit pause on, on, you know, any more visual stuff because you've got the sort of the brand, the vibe figured out, but then really just figure like, what is the value proposition? Who is it that I'm going to be helping and how? And how can I isolate a step out of that and give them a win on their own? And that's the thing that you put in the funnel.
Yeah, okay.
And just put that up top, put it up top big up here and really make it something that's gonna pop out and they're gonna be like, oh, well, yes, I want that, of course I want that, please. I mean, can I give you my money? Like, that's, that's the kind of thing that you want to put up top. And then, then you know, people who come in through that funnel, they are going to be your perfect people. And, you know, even if you don't have, and you don't have to do like a big involved, you know, seven million step course to do this either. You can have an idea in your head, a process that you know you want to follow. And then, you know, oils can be the root and the door because it's obviously going to be an oiled process, right? And then, you know, you, you work with them one-on-one through the process and then you eventually get around to building a course out of it or something like that. That's it. Yeah, you're doing a great job.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, sure thing, sure thing. Thanks for, for joining and being a great example of branding on our site. Alright, who is next? I don't know why I keep losing this link. Alright, if you know that you signed up for one today and you want to shortcut me losing my page here, Jennifer, I believe, yes, Jennifer O'Donnell, is that you? Yes, hello, welcome.
Hi there, how are you?
Doing great. Glad you're here. Alright, so tell me, tell me a little bit about what you would like to share. And actually, I'm going to, because I know you sent me an email, and I'm gonna find the link. And I looked at it earlier and I was impressed. Hold on just a second. Yeah, tell us a little bit about the feedback that you're looking for today.
So, for this. So, Green Thumb Cooking is all about helping people that have allergies not feel isolated and rather more part of the crowd, finding indulgences. It just requires some tweaks and some creativity to really kind of get that done. But that's, that's kind of like where it's, it's coming at. I started working on it and then I backed away from it and I blogged a couple things and I was like, I don't know if I'm doing it right. So, I wasn't sure if my lead magnet is exactly strong enough that I have up there at the top. I'm giving like healthy cooking swaps to just kind of think outside of the box as far as products that will replace, in particular gluten and dairy. Where a lot of people struggle with that, but then we also don't have great options. But there are options. Just have to get a little creative. So, I wasn't sure if that's really getting me people to buy Young Living. I'm doing Go For Gold, so.
Okay.
I know that that is the idea to get them into my specialty group and I'm not sure if that really is a step in the way to get them there.
Okay, well, so how, how do you see, how do you see your path with gluten-free and dairy-free? How do, how do you see that sort of intermingling with the oils? Or do you, do you see like a clear line-to-line connection there? It's okay if you don't.
So, I actually have extensive allergies in the past that, that brought me to cooking with, with oils through Young Living because they're so pure. So, a lot of my recipes do have oils in them. But I'm not quite sure how to, without being like in your face, like make sure that you're only buying Young Living oils and have them like every other post be like, oh my gosh, she's talking about oils again. Why can't I just use Walmart oils? Like, I know there has to be some type of clarification, but I'm not sure how to do that without it being too much.
Got you, got you. Okay, well, so first things first, like you're doing a great job with this. This looks like you, you may have used like the, the website theme from Go For Gold and modified it. And I really think you've done a good job with this. What I would say is, is this. What's the best way to put this? Oh, you know what? Qualifying question. Do you love, love, love blogging about food and writing recipes?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
That's a huge passion of mine, along with gardening. So, I was trying to put the two together.
Perfect. Alright, so, so here's the thing. You don't have to be, excuse me, you don't have to be the oily, the oily recipe blogger. You don't have to be that. You can be your kind of recipe blogger who builds trust with people because you make recipes that they love and your personality resonates with them and they like the way that you write. And that trust is built and so that, you know, at the bottom of a post, and here, here's where I would recommend, this is how you, you move around the too much bit. Make a custom page on your site that talks about all things Young Living and oils and all of that kind of stuff and then gives them a call to action to contact you or even place an order. There are actually a number of very successful bloggers who build Young Living online, on and off of our platform, who, who use this same strategy, where they're just showing up and they're talking about instant pot cooking or they're talking about homeschooling, or they're talking about minimalism and, and design or feng shui or whatever. And then when they make a comment about essential oils on a post, instead of having to go on and on and on and on in a post, when somebody just showed up to learn about your gluten-free bread, they didn't show up to learn about oils, you know, they, you can have a qualifier there, you know, maybe something italicized or something like that that says, hey, by the way, really important that you know that the quality of your oils matter. If you want to learn more about what I use and why, click here. And then that can just go off to that other page that is dedicated to talking about why you choose Young Living, how you use the oils, and then of course, giving them an opportunity to either place an order or reach out to you.
Now, would you make that a button or you just would do it like italicized and let them just click on it?
I would just have them click on it. Just because of the frequency with which you'll probably be linking this thing.
Yes.
We don't want it to be so like, I made this blog post about bread, so you can buy oils. You know what I mean? But one thing that you could certainly do is maybe under your site menu, you can have a, you know, why I use oils in cooking, or you, you could include it definitely in your, in your menu items for sure. But I, yeah, I would just, I would just use a separate page because you're gonna talk about it a lot, but you don't want it to feel like it's the focal point of every piece of content that you make, which is smart of you because you're going to very, very quickly turn people off, right? If they can kind of feel like, you know, oh, well, this, I mean, this may not be that great of a bread recipe because she clearly is just here to sell me oils, right?
Right, right. Okay, good.
Yeah, excellent.
Could you give me feedback on the About Me page that I have up in the site menu? I just wonder if it's, I don't know, too much, not enough, or if it's too busy?
It's not too much and it's not too busy. It actually, it's visually interesting because you have, you've made some breaks visually. If this was all the same size and type of text, it would just, it would look like a lot and that feels like work to the brain. And, and in the internet age, humans are very brain lazy, so this is good. And, and here's an important thing for you to remember. If somebody is going to go through the trouble of clicking a link that says about you, assume that they're gonna want to read what's there. If you wanted to include your about here, it's better for you to be really quick about it, right?
Okay.
Because when they're on this.
I originally had it there until this morning, so.
Yeah, this, good move. Yeah, good, good move. It's great to have your personality show up on your homepage, but strategically, it's gotta be about them, right? Like, I'm here to help you solve this problem. I'm here to help you make sense of this thing that confuses you. And making it about them. And, and the better you do that, the, the greater your success will be in getting people to subscribe, to follow. And then, of course, the more people are exposed to what you're sharing, just on a value-forward basis, the more open, more and more of those people will be to share you with their audience and then, of course, to, you know, to, to then hear from you and decide that they like what you have to say and take your recommendation on the oils. I will say this, you, this is a great job, like taking like your, your tagged recipe categories and putting them into a menu up here. I thought that was a genius move when I saw this earlier. Good job. One thing that I, I might encourage you to do, because you do have a little bit of a body of work here, is that once you, you know, once you decide what the kind of maybe more dialed-in, you know, lead magnet offer is that you want to put up here, I want you to go and seek out people who are speaking to the audience that you're getting in front of and see if you might be able to contribute or guest blog on their website. Because you've, once you've created, you've got your site ready like this, you've got a body of work and the things that you've already put together, you are a published author. You are a credible source. And so, you should go and, you know, and joint venture and, and connect with other people who are, you know, who are doing similar things. They can guest post on your blog. Maybe you guys can promote to each other's lists, that kind of thing. Like, you're, you're, you know, basically ready for next level stuff. On the, on the guide part here, what I would recommend for you is to, is to really just kind of think about, think about like the deepest desires of someone who is dealing, you know, with, with these types of allergies. You might even think about some more aspects of the person, you know, like, do they also hike? You know, do they also love animals? Like, it's not, doesn't mean that you're necessarily going to make your blog about like hiking and gluten-free cooking plus dogs, but, but that you have a clear understanding of speaking to that person from their values. This is kind of the bat signal thing that Martha talks about. So, you know, so just be thinking about what that is, right? Because if, if we are like, okay, five swaps, like, okay, that's nice. Yeah, if you've got an allergy, swaps are good. But, I mean, is this somebody, you bring up indulgences, right? So, if indulgences are maybe a trigger, you know, so then, then you could use language that's more like, you know, these are the cookies that you want to get out of bed at midnight to eat, you know? Yeah, that kind of thing. You know, here's the, you know, I made the cake that you never thought you could eat again. You want to try it? Like, that's, that's kind of what we want to do, is to give them a win and something that they really want. And, and where we're talking about food, yeah, like let's talk about indulgence and, and get into some indulgent language in your copywriting to the extent that it is congruent with your personality.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, good job. Really, really impressed with what you've done and thank you for sharing. Alright, now we've, let's see, who else do we have? We have Judith and Dana Stel. Dana, here you are. I'm gonna have you talk now, if you could come on out. Excited to chat with you. Hi!
How are you?
Doing well, thank you. How's it going?
Great.
Great, alright, so I'm gonna share your site. Tell us a little bit about the feedback that you are looking for.
Well, I'm looking for your expertise. Obviously, it's work in progress. We just got some things. We used Alison's course to, to design what we've done so far. So, I'm looking, I think, for just, you know, ideas to enhance or suggestions to take away or keep or whatever.
Okay.
Can I give you a little bit of my background as far as the, my avatar and my goal with the thing?
No, please go ahead.
For personal, if you see that, oh, at the top, Dana Ellison, the Natural Health Educator. So, I'm working towards the holistic health coach, or sorry, holistic health practitioner certification. So, the, the site will be developing more into that as well. My, let's see, my, I'm losing my words here. Let's see. My passion is biblical health and educating other Christians on understanding true health and true natural health. So, my avatar then is a 45-year-old Christian mom. So, she's gonna have teenagers or possibly some on the way out the door that's beginning to experience these health issues and the symptoms. My lead grip that I've developed toward that is biblical health for Christ-centered homeowners. So, if I can show the target of where I'm trying to head and see if my site is heading that way or what I could do to further improve it.
Yeah, yeah, so first things first, you've done a beautiful job here. It's very clean. It's very clean, it's, it's very legible, it's not too busy, like everywhere that you have a flourish, it's understated, and it's, it's just really nice to see and look at the congruency that you have here and the filters and the overlay of text and stuff for navigation. This is great. The one thing I would recommend is that you move something like this up to the top of the page. One way that you can do that and keep this lovely image of you up here at the top is to consider using this image, like I showed in our first review today, as a, as a background image for a section. So instead of just putting this image into the section, it becomes the background image for the section, and then you can put text on top of it. One thing you may consider doing is, is perhaps using some kind of a photo editor and lightening maybe this side of a photo, and, and having it be a gradient into maybe about midway, or what is that, a little over, like maybe two-thirds of the way through? So that this, like text becomes more legible on this side. And so then you can say, you know, I help the woman that you just said, I hope, I help Christian homemakers, you know, live a more biblical path, get my guide to, you know, catching these things before they come up. And then you have the little section with a button, where they can actually get that guide. And so that way, what you're doing on this page is instead of just saying, hey, wait, 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 like, let's be in touch before you go, which is not a bad idea. You can actually have something that does speak straight to her and helps her to get a win, so that you're establishing that trust and she's understanding that, you know, the relevance you bring to the table that you can help her with. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Awesome. So, yeah, that's what I would do. I would, I would make this a background image in your section. I would, again, lighten this side of it. You know, you can probably pay somebody to do that, or if you've got, you know, a kid or a friend that knows how to use Photoshop, you know, do something like that. And then, and then just have that message to her right up here, up front. And that way, you're still preserving this really lovely sort of feel that you get. I mean, I feel like, I feel like you're someone I know. Like, this is really well-done in terms of how it speaks you. We just want to make sure that the moment someone lands here, they say, oh, she's here for me. And that's not quite what we're getting when we land here. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. That's what I'm asking.
Okay, good, good. Thank you so much for sharing today, and definitely feel free to come back if you're, you know, making those edits and you want some more feedback. Sign up for a review. I'd be happy to help you.
I did have another question.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay, so, so as far as the Get Oiling side of my website, where would you recommend to put it? So in my main menu, I don't have any of that stuff yet. I had thought about linking there. In my groups or my resource page, I was going to, to have it there. Do you recommend anywhere else?
Yeah. Oh, so are you talking about like using the Leg Builder links and having our website themes?
Yes. Well, so I have another, my original website was Living a Chemical-Free Life. And so then I want to develop that into just my oil page for when I'm ready to share that.
Okay.
And I thought about using it under my health resources, or should I do it on my main menu?
So, oh, oh, you do, I just caught something here. You are linking to an editor page, unfortunately. So make sure that you're, when you link to this page, hit view and then use the link that pops up there.
That is not completed yet. We haven't done that.
Got you, got you. Yeah, so, so a couple of things. The way that I recommend, if you're branding yourself first, I like to introduce opportunity and product and things like that, especially if you're coming from a health coach's perspective. I like to introduce that in the funnel, unless a piece of content that you're creating does pertain specifically to product or recommendations. Now, if you have a, you know, sort of a biblical wellness toolkit, or you have, you know, recommended things like that, and you're blogging about biblical wellness, or you're blogging about some aspect of it, and you say, hey, if you want to get access to my toolkit, here's what you do, and then you make a funnel for that. You know, or, you know, or you just make a blog post about it, and then you link off. Like I was just mentioning on our, I believe it was our last, our last review, where you could have a separate page that talks about not just what Young Living is and why you recommend it, but, you know, how you use it and how it fits in for you specifically. In terms of our, our pre-made pages and themes that are meant to actually kind of set people up for the direction they want to purchase in, you know, what kit they want to get, what additional products they want to have, what lines they could be interested in, those are tools that are a lot more effective, once you are already in the process of kind of qualifying and setting up a prospect for reviewing information, right? So when people are encountering this site that you've made here, including whatever you put on the blog, oh, hey, look at that. When you, this is linking off to Living a Chemical-Free Life, I think. So, so when people land on, on your, on your homepage or anywhere on your site, they're learning about Dana and what Dana does and what Dana knows and how Dana can help them. You want to invite them to come a little closer, follow the breadcrumb trail a little further, and ideally, like, have a conversation with you. This is kind of where, you know, right now, we are personal branding and internet marketing, right? The point at which internet marketing, personal branding stops, and network marketing begins, is when someone becomes a lead. So the way that you get started is the way that you get others started, right? That's like the truth of duplication in this business. So it's really important that we aren't seeking to just, you know, have things out there that just automatically turn people on to and sign people up into Young Living. That's not generally how it works. Yes, there are cases where it has happened. You'll find that most of the time, you won't see that duplicating beyond a single level. So what you want to do when it's time to introduce oils is, is to actually have people reach out, you know, maybe it's one of these, maybe you have a form for like a 15-minute consult, and you're going to chat with them about maybe what their, their top priorities are. And maybe ahead of the call, you let them know that, you know, hey, I may recommend some Young Living products to you, or something like that. And then you could have a page that maybe then links off to those different themes, so that they can learn about the different product lines, for instance. But it's, generally speaking, it's not something that I would just have out there on the front of the website, because people need to be shown Young Living, the same way you would show Young Living in any other way, which begins with a relationship, right? So use what you're doing here and how you're putting yourself out there to get leads that you would then treat exactly the same as you would if you had met them in a grocery line, when it comes to actually sharing Young Living with them.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for coming on today. All right, let's see, I think we have Judith. Are you here? All right. Where'd you go? All right. Come on out.
Hello.
Hi, how's it going?
Good.
Good, good. It's good to have you here today. Excited to see what you've been up to here. Tell me, what kind of feedback are you looking for today?
Oh, gosh, well, I still have primarily, you know, the, all the defaulted stuff, and I wanted to kind of customize that homepage to look different, but I just had no idea how.
Okay, yeah. So we actually have a number of different trainings on how to do this. I guess first, first things first, are you a part of Go for Gold, or maybe Ally Dean's course? Like, are you in any, any additional courses?
I am in, I have done Go for Gold a while ago. I am in the Homebase Revolution, Silvermaid Simple.
Okay.
You know, all of the above, I feel like.
Okay, excellent.
I do want to have, you know, Young Living as a piece of the website, but I am creating other courses and have other, you know, interests as well. So I just wanted to be kind of, have a dropdown menu where that could be a choice, that they could go to that page separately.
Yep, absolutely. So the good news is, is that if you have Go for Gold and you follow it from, and implement each step from the beginning to the very end, you will have, at the start, a funnel that will then grow into a sort of a multiple container strategy for leads and how you convert them into members. And then you will also have a content plan for generating leads, and then finally, you will have a custom website. So we actually have a template for you that's in there, and we show you how to use it, how to customize it, and how to set up a custom menu on it. And, and really, I mean, just, I guess, in going through Go for Gold, the, the piece of advice that I can offer, aside from just do it, and like go through every step that it shows you to do, trusting that it will come together and connect together into something that will make sense to you by the time you're done with it.
I actually wasn't even, I went through Go for Gold a long time ago. It was probably shortly when it very first came out. And I don't think any of these things existed. It was just a few modules and that was it. So then people were talking about different pieces to Go for Gold, and I was like, what the heck is she talking about? And I only just recently noticed that there was an entire set of videos that taught you how to create a course.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of big.
I had no idea. So apparently, there's more things that I'm not aware of.
A lot, actually, yeah. So that, that actually started out as Golden Six, and Martha had made, I think, like five videos, and she was, you know, sharing, yeah, that she was sharing the steps that she followed. But when we all partnered up together to add content to that and to add context with the website, we added the whole digital strategy there, too. So it's all there. Absolutely go through that. It's going to show you exactly how to use your Get Oiling site and follow her strategy in the process. And, and the good news is, what's that, I'm sorry?
Where do I find those? Like, I went back and logged into my Go for Gold, you know, Martha's original videos and modules. I don't even remember where I came. I don't know. I don't remember where I found the thing about the courses. I happened to stumble on it somewhere, and I don't even remember where I found it.
Okay, so if you go to getoiling.com/goforgold,
Okay.
You're going to find her,
Yeah.
You're going to find this page here, and then when you come over here, of course, I'm, I'm logged in here, so this is, this is different. But this is, this is where you'll find everything. You could also go to the Go for Gold student group. If you're on Facebook, you'll be able to get all of that information in there as well.
Okay, so those same modules live there as well in units?
Well, so no, no. The, the material is different. So the, the course materials for Go for Gold is actually inside of a Get Oiling vault of Martha's, and then the, and then the original Golden Six videos and stuff, those are in both, actually. They're in the group as well as inside of the modules.
All right. So what is the website again? Where you find that?
The easiest place to find everything is to just go to the Go for Gold student group, which you should have access to. And, yeah, that, that'll have everything. If you look in the unit section, it'll have all the links. There's deep dive trainings into these different concepts. It'll have everything that you need to know.
Okay. And then you said there's also modules in the, in her, in her vault for the actual class.
Right, and that's, that's where Go for Gold is, right? So the, actually, like the lessons and everything that you need to know is going to be right in there.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
So I have a lot of work to do.
But, but just focus on completion over perfection, and know that you can always come on here for a review of your work, and we're here to help you through the process.
All right, wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Have a great day. Okay, I believe we have, we have one more? Do we have one more? Did we have, did Jennifer come on already? We did, Jennifer, Tammy, Judith, Dana, Echo. Yeah, we did. Excellent. So a lot of reviews today. Thank you, guys, for sticking around. I think we had a couple of questions.
Yeah, we've got a handful of questions in the Q and A here.
All right, let's get through those.
Ah, so let's see, there's a couple of demos and maybe like some strategy questions. So like, Brenda asks, I have created an event on my website. How do I go about posting and inviting on Facebook and other social media platforms? That's kind of like, it's like maybe a combination of tech and, and strategy. On the tech side, Brenda, like every event that you have, there's like a little view button. Click it, copy that link, you can post it on Facebook. That's the how-to. I don't know if that's what you're looking for, but I'm fascinated if you've got more to lend to that.
Yeah, so if you have, so you've got an event on your website, I guess, I guess it depends, right, on, on what you're using for the event. If you are using the Get Oiling Events Manager, then you would just share the link for that event. And in your, like, manage events, you can actually grab links to any events that you have coming up from right there. From there, people can RSVP directly. If you wanted to use some of the other strategies that we've taught about doing something that's a little more like webinar style, I know we've, we've taught that on the weekly work session, using like a funnel that leads up to it. And then I know in Martha's Homebase Revolution, I've taught that as well, kind of going webinar style for the actual live event and then for the replay. So you, you take the link, whether it's for the landing page that you're using to promote, if you're using a landing page, or you take the event link, and then you get out there and you share it, and you let people know that they should be, that they should be signing up for it. All right, I forgot to ask. Tammy said a question about putting Young Living on my website. It's my biggest favorite income stream. What is the best way to add Young Living on a page? Should I make them dig? I'm trying to figure out how to word it on my services page. So whether or not you want to make somebody dig is really a matter of personal preference. And I think it ties a lot into sort of what the content is and what your value proposition is for your ideal person. If oils are something that are very adjacent, like we were talking about earlier, I believe with Jennifer's site, where she is, she's blogging about recipes all the time, and the recipes are for a very specific kind of person, and she does mention in her recipes frequently that she uses oils. She's going to have a page that she can link off to, so that if someone wants to know, like, sure, they could omit oil from the recipe, right? But if they want to know why she says don't buy them at Walmart, then they can click the link and go check it out. If, on the other hand, you know, you're speaking to someone who wants to live a fuller life and experience more freedom, maybe your, to use Martha's terminology, bat signal, if you will, is, is actually, you know, around business, and you want to talk about opportunity. So it really, it just, it kind of depends. There's not, there's not a right or wrong way to do it per se, although I will say, just because of the nature of the business and for the sake of duplication, you don't want to put it too far out front. You want content to shine first, so that people understand the context and they want to keep listening, and they'll take you seriously when you give them recommendations. All right, Wendy says, is there any way to get buttons that are shapes other than rectangle?
Yes, I can show you this right now. So if you're on, I think it's the premium plan or the basic plan with the fonts, colors, and analytics add-on, go under my site and then click Settings, and then there will be a custom colors and fonts icon down here. And then at the bottom, all of your icon or your buttons will show up down here. Now, this is a demo account, so I've highly customized these, but you can see some of them around. There's, you click on these, they'll just take one of the built-in yellow ones. There's this button corners option. You can round them up, kind of decide how round they're going to be, or you can make them square. So, yeah, you can, you can do that. If you want to get really fancy, then that's where you could maybe create an image in Canva or something like that, and you use that for a button instead. But, yeah, otherwise, there is this, you know, general option about how round do you want your button corners? If you don't like them to be rectangle, the round is a nice look, too, or you can kind of dial it back a little bit as well. So, cool. Hopefully that helps. Carrie had a question here. Kind of a follow-up. She wanted me to show how essentially you can link to a Young Living product with your member number attached. So what I'm going to do, I'll just pull up a new blog post here, just to pretend I'm writing a new blog post, and I'm going to be talking all about lavender. I'll just say like lavender is awesome. Okay, and if I want to link lavender, then what I'll do is I'll go over here and find on Young Living's website. I just happen to have this link open. This could be any product that they have that has, you know, their add the card button on there. If you click it, copy, you know, copy the link, come back over here, and I'll double-click, and, oh, my grammar Lee is getting in the way. What's this miss? Okay. So I'll double-click on this, and I want to add a link, or sorry, well, actually, what I need to do first is come over here and use the leaf icon. So click on this little insert while link with my member number, click on that, paste in the link, the product link that you want to have, and it puts in this big long link. You can see it's got the lavender essential oil with your sponsor and enroller number on there. Now, what you need to do is just click on edit, and then change the text to something other than this big long link. This is where I would say lavender is awesome, or whatever. Click here to buy lavender. It might make more sense. So I do that, and then I'll delete what, yeah, that works. So anyway, now there's a link that has the, your member number on there. So if they do click, it does take them to this page. It'll have the member number on there. So if they edit the cart and checkout- So if they add it to cart and checkout, it will track that back to you, and you'll get a retail customer. And it does try to, if you go through the process, the Young Living checkout flow does try to upsell them to a membership, but there is a way to check out for retail there, too. So hopefully that helps, Carrie.
Excellent, and Tammy was asking which training will be best to move forward in learning and creating websites? So if you have Go for Gold, by all means, use that. You could also go over to the homepage of our website. We have some recommendations there as well. There's different courses that you can follow to create your own custom site. And then, of course, look back through creating a custom website in the 90-day challenge under the help button inside of Get Oiling. I believe it's week nine, right? Is that week nine?
Yep. It's also in the help library.
And then the help library, yeah. When in doubt, go to that little circle, go to that little question mark in the circle and click it and type in homepage, and I think you'll find what you're looking for. You'll also find these things in volume at youtube.com/getoiling. All right, I think the Q and A, we got that figured out? We're good to go? All right?
I think so, we're good.
Cool, cool, all right, great, guys. Thanks for being here today, and, oh, Kim, we missed the circus. All right, well, we love you, guys, and we appreciate you, and we will see you back here, same time, same channel, next week. Have a great week, everyone.